That was to give them enough time to do it.
Well, because it depends on what gets paid. It depends on what gets paid for because, you know, we'll probably come in and build the building, but just to...
I did not. North American Taiwanese Women's Association. Taiwanese women like you. Yeah? What can you say?
Do you have a chance to look at the document that said I refer to the council? What was that? Oh, yeah, I think I saw that. Yeah. And apologize, I'm hitting David Daniels. Most people were...
When my son was reading the history of the book, he asked if we knew which option to adopt.
I think so.
Yes.
Pause, link to council meeting order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some changes and additions to the agenda. We have on our table tonight budget schedule for the next year FY12 budget. That week, we're going to put under consent item C-10-183 to accept the budget memo and approve FY12 budget memo dated December 20th from Lee Burgoyne. And then we discussed at our work session postponing agenda item 10-179 to the next meeting, assuming that would be sufficiently developed to be ready for the next meeting. And then Mr. City Manager Campbell passed out five sheets of paper regarding the benefits, three letters from our unions, discussion and summary of what they're in agreement to, and then based on those three letters and our work to date, two summaries, one City of Celine by unit and then City of Celine high deductible options. That would be all. All those five items would be going under item 10-182. Everybody on board so far?
Yep.
Also like to add, under discussion, the demolition process of the city and then the NLC conference report that I will be making.
The what process, Mayor?
Demolition.
Oh, okay.
So are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? If not, then we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Rowe? Second, Mr. Law? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is, well, our summit is exciting, for others maybe not so much. First of all, I'd like to ask council member, former council member Alicia Ping to come up. We have two council members that are completing their terms.
Hello? Does work. Sorry, scary. I want to say thank you to Alicia. She's also got the flu, so I try not standing very close to her because she said she wasn't sure she was going to come. And so I normally give you a big hug and say congratulations, but I don't want to get what you've told me you have, so. It's one of the things about tonight that, you know, it's with mixed emotions, two council members that are finishing their terms here are longstanding council members who have contributed a great deal to the community over a long, very long period of time. I'll read some of the plaque. Alicia Ping has, Dee Ping, has served the City of Celine as a council member for 11 years, most recently from January 2006 to October 12, 2010, and has served as a member or delegate to the following Arts and Culture Committee, Environmental Commission, Historic District Commission, Michigan Municipal League, Celine Area Senior Citizen Executive Board, and the Celine Youth Council. And previous, she represented the city on a national board, the National League of Cities Board, and I know you've been involved in many ways and not just on the committees, but, you know, in your heart that you've really contributed to the city in multiple ways. And you always bring a good dialogue to the council table and a lot of homework and curiosity, and you're really going to be missed. Your seniority and your level of experience with leadership and government is, has been greatly appreciated here in the city. And I know that you're going to be our commissioner, so you have to stay in touch and, you know, we're going to probably be bugging you and making sure that you're representing the city well, but I'm sure you will after your sister Jessica has been doing that for a few years. So we're lucky to have, you know, good connection there at the county level. So I'd like everybody to give Alicia a round of applause and say thank you.
I said this before, but it really, it has been a pleasure to serve the city. And I think I did a lot, but I think I got a lot more out than I gave. And it really has been a pleasure to work with all of you on council and the staff and especially the citizens. It's really been, it added, it's added and enhanced so much to my life, so thank you very much.
So you're looking very serious.
Yeah, I was very serious.
Okay. So I'll read a little bit first and then share my thoughts. Patrick Little has served the City of Celine as a member of the Celine City Council for 17 years, six years as mayor from 1991 to 1996, and 11 years as council member. And he served the city as a member or delegate to the following Celtic Festival Committee, Environmental Commission, Local Access Cable Television Commission, Celine Area Fire Department Executive Board, Stock Trail Business Park Development Committee, Sister City Committee, Watts Policy Committee.
And there's, again, there's a lot of things that aren't on here that you've done for our community that has made our community a really great place to live. And I don't think this room has enough words to say, to say thank you for what you've contributed over the years. And, you know, I was just talking to your wife about, I sort of have the same bug where you like driving down the road and there's a problem. And, you know, so we're trying to figure out like who you're going to call. You can still call me, please call me, and I'll pass it on to Todd, but we know that your heart is in your community and you've done a lot. Pat has his name on the DPW building. We're glad to see that. And really, your name should be on the Recreation Center building because you were really the most active advocate for that, you know, rec complex and founding member of the Environmental Commission. You founded ADHOC as an environmental commission and, you know, you've just done so much for our community and you're a real hero to me for everything that you've done. And I want to tell you personally that I really appreciate your leadership in our community and you will be seriously missed in a very significant way. So thank you very much again.
Thank you. Well, I look at this and I understand why I'm tired. It's really been, it's really been a lot of fun, very interesting and a learning experience. And the fact that the citizens of Celine, other than that one voter there, the citizens have found that they trust me enough to elect me numerous times to council and mayor has really been very much an honor and I really appreciate it. And I appreciate all you've said and everything else, but I feel the council's going to do bang-up job and you're doing a bang-up job and we'll just be just fine. And I'll try not to complain about anything for a couple of weeks.
I was going to say, we're definitely going to miss your wry sense of humor, so...
Yeah, well, we'll see. Thanks.
Thanks, Liam.
Question?
Somebody's phone is on the counter.
Well, I'm here on behalf of the Celine Area Fire Board and the Celine Fire Department because both of these folks served on the fire board. Alicia Early in 2003 and '04, I think that's what Carol came up with. And that was right during the transition period from being a volunteer department and moving into full-time, putting full-time staff on. Alicia is always one that you can talk to, approachable, answers the questions and calls and asks questions, so I don't get waylaid at the meetings. So we appreciate that. And Mr. Little has been on for several, several years. In fact, we couldn't come up with a number, but while I was looking, I did find an invoice with his signature for 24 leather fire buckets. So it's been a long time. I'll go slow so we all can... Exactly. But thank you very mu... That's why, because of folks like you, that's why we have one of the best departments in the county. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And we're going to just have a little quick refreshment break and get a chance for all the council members and family to visit and say thank you to our council members that are completing their term. So you don't need to go sit down yet. Thanks. So it's a little bit different. Okay. Okay, so we re-come in at 8:13. Citizen comments on agenda items on the Open Meetings Act, and citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Sure anyone that would like to speak to items on the agenda?
Mary House 600 Canterbury, and I want to speak to 10-181, the grant request for the non-motorist path from Maple to Harris Street. And it appears it's about $250, quarter of a million dollars. My concern is that there is no plan for the people to see. And I know we had one come through quite a few years ago that had asphalt six feet wide and was lit, proposed, and a lot of things. And it would have been nice, I think, for the people adjacent to the property and the taxpayers to be able to have seen what the plan is. Also, when we did the, the council did the questionnaire on what do you want to do, would you like to see our city do? And there was a portion of, if we have to cut back on services, what would you think that the services, which services should be cut? Now, needless to say, fire, garage, garbage, police, and recycling and wastewater was way, way up there. But down was streetscape, sidewalks, and also the rec center, the cemetery. And everyone knows the economics are not going to get that much better, I don't believe, for the next couple of years. And if we start cutting services and asking us our services, I wish we would have been asked this part, even though 17% only, you know, answered the survey at a cost of about, what, $13,000? But I think that at this point, I would like, and I'm sure other people would like to have seen the plan and what is being proposed and where the money's coming from, if it's cares or if it's a library, it's still taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any citizen comments on items on the agenda? Not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The final consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, to the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Again, we have the addition of C-10-183, which is the memo from Mr. Burgoyne regarding the budget schedule for fiscal year 12. So with that addition, do we have a motion to approve and adopt the items on the consent agenda as amended?
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Moral, second Ivy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under public hearings, item 10-188, application for industrial facilities tax exemption for DigiPod. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 14, 2010 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne regarding revised recommendation on IFT application from DigiPod and file. Do we have a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Rose, do we have a second? Second, Law. Question. Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, this is a public hearing to consider tax abatement for the, for an expansion for DigiPod. And the, when this went through the Special Projects Commission, I had inadvertently not filled in part two on the guidelines, the IFT guidelines, and attempted to do it at the meeting and put in the wrong data, got the wrong answer. So noticed that the next day, and that's the reason that this memo says revised recommendation on the IFT application. The original recommendation without number two filled in and also Special Projects Commission awarded 50 points for being a high-tech application. Originally, this would have gotten four years. It was my incorrect calculation at Special Project. I figured the years would have doubled, but that was wrong. When I got back and did the calculation correctly, came out to six years. So it's before you hear with the correct information for recommendation for six years tax abatement.
Any questions for Mr. Burgoyne? We have a motion to acknowledge receipt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need a motion to open a public hearing for any public applicant and taxing units an opportunity to be heard.
Sure. Second.
Little. Second, Moral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Move Ivy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Little. All in favor, say aye to close the public hearing.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. This is a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution approving application of DigiPod for industrial facilities exemption certificate in the amount of $50,000 for building and land improvements, excluding land costs, and $755,400 for furniture and fixtures for a total project cost of $805,400 for a period of six years, subject to the terms and provision of the tax abatement agreement to be entered into by the applicant and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said tax abatement agreement between the city and DigiPod as prepared and approved by Attorney Grossman.
Sue move to approve and adopt and to authorize, as written?
Support.
Little, second, Rose. Tim, would you like to come to the mic and talk about what your plans are for this equipment and your project? A little bit of selling, your business?
That's what I do all day.
Another opportunity.
Well, this is the third time we've been here in front of you. So back in 2006, we built a building and at that time, we actually built it larger than what we needed. And so now we're expanding into the space because now we need it. Our business is actually growing quite a bit right now. We're up about 40% and we're drawing business from all over the United States and Canada. And primarily what we're doing is printing books for self-publishers, short run, anywhere from 24 copies up to 3,000 copies, paperback style books. And we're growing like crazy right now. So we need more equipment, more space, and we anticipate adding three to five employees here in the next three years. I think that's being pretty conservative. So right now, we're running a second shift. We probably will have to put on a third shift, so.
That's great. Anybody have any questions? Thank you for that information and congratulations on your success.
And I want to thank the city too because you guys are very business friendly, even the builders, you know, I mean, using a different builder this time to finish it off. And everything they say, it's like they went down to the planning commission, got the plans approved, got the permit, everything, it's very business friendly and there's no hitches. The inspectors are there when they say they're going to be there and so it's very nice. I don't have to worry about anything, so it's very nice.
Great. Well, thank you. We'll make sure staff gets that passed along. Mr. Little?
Yeah, I just want to comment that DigiPod, grateful that they're expanding and I wish they'd move another, triple your size in the next 12 months, but they're good supporters of the community. They're really good corporate citizens and they've done a lot for the, for the community, for events and so on. I just commend you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks again and congratulations. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve and adopt and authorize. Any further discussion on this motion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, item 10-154, the ice rink rules and signs. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 8, 2010 memo from Downtown Development Director Trapp. To approve or not approve the rules and regulations for the ice rink as proposed, as well as the no skating sign to be used when the ice rink is not in usable condition.
Move to approve.
Move Rose, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Tahar. Discussion. Mr. Law?
I know we need rules and I certainly agree with these rules. It's sometimes difficult somehow to enforce these rules, which goes with just about anything, I guess, with a public facility, such as no skating when they're not there, when there's, when it's closed, hockey sticks and pucks. And I know the police, they patrol that area as they do most areas around the parks, so I just wanted to make the public aware of that. Certainly I have nothing against hockey sticks and pucks, but I know that's a rule that that is on here, so it's just something that we have to be aware of, that, you know, this is what's, you know, potentially can happen. So, but I know that the signs, they legally are necessary for the city's sake.
Mr. Moral?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question and I think I ought to direct it to City Manager Campbell since Mr. Trapp isn't present. But first of all, I don't have any problem with these new rules and regulations, nor do I have any problem with the ice rink as a whole. But I've driven past Hennyfield a couple of times in the past week, and although they were not using the ice rink, they were in the vicinity, they being some pretty young children. And I just wonder again if there's been any more thought invested to the, in the, to the notion, excuse me, of having somebody on, on site, an attendant on duty.
The quick, the quick answer is no, there is not. And part of the reason is liability. Again, that's why it says basically skid your own risk, because our liability will, will increase by having someone there as well.
Also, our rules say the children should be supervised by a responsible adult. So, I mean, that's in the rules there. So it is, no.
Well, again, I don't have any problem with the rules and regulations. I'll vote to, to approve them. It's just, you know, I don't know. It's difficult to have a rule and then not have anybody there to enforce them. Would be my concern. So if you say in writing...
We have rules all over town. I mean, all the speeding signs say don't speed and people either follow it or don't. I mean, this is, this is our society, the way, I mean, we have certain financial constraints.
No, I get that. I mean, I think there's a distinction between speeding and the ice rink, but I guess it's neither here nor there.
Mr. Little?
I wouldn't vote to approve this, and I'll tell you why. I see families, kids and dads and maybe moms out there with a hockey puck and some sticks and the dads are playing with a little pickup with their kids. I don't see anything wrong with that. There's no boards, so you're not going to have any big time checking. It's small, you're not going to build up a lot of speed. And I just, you know, I understand all this, all this is in here, so sort of it's boiler plate because of the litigious society we're in, but I just think this is a great opportunity for let people take care of it themselves and, you know, it seems to work out a lot of different places where there's ice and people get on a lake and they skate. You know, I just think that if, if a dad and a couple of kids get together and want to shoot a puck around, why, what's the big deal about that? Now, you know, if you've got, it's just too small to try and do five-on-five or six-on-six or even three-on-three hockey. It's just small. But to go out there and just screw around with a puck? I mean, there's an issue of, if you get figure skaters on there and they're skating in reverse and they're doing all these twirls and stuff, there's a risk and a danger to that. It's just, let it go. Let it be.
Were these rules recommended by our liability company?
We, we proposed them to them and they said that they agreed with the, the rules. So I guess my only, one of my concerns would be the time and fashion. And I certainly do agree with the comment about figure skating and, but if you have, I guess my concern, whether it be figure skaters or, or hockey, if people are out in a community and a group are trying to skate around, and again, I'm not a hockey player, I'm not a skater, so I, so I, but I guess my concern would be if someone starts shooting a puck, that puck can, I mean, that puck can become a missile at some point. So if you have lots of people, I mean, if you have a number of people, that would be my concern.
Well, I think it controls itself. I think, especially if you've got dads out there with their kids, they're not going to be doing all sorts of stuff with a hockey puck when there's little kids skating and so on. I just think it's, and I know the liability issue, but I just think it is one of these deals where we just let it go, let, let people be grown-ups and hope and pray, I guess, but trust that they'll do that. You know, the other thing is, is that I've been by there twice now when I've seen cars parked right up there, lights shining and, and the dead of night and people skating. And this, I didn't, I didn't see anybody with hockey sticks, I just saw people skating. So, you know, it's a great resource. I am an old scarred-up hockey player and I get this, think it's just a good opportunity. There's no free ice to speak of in this world and that's an opportunity for little kids to come out and skate around.
Mayor?
Mr. Law?
I would move an amendment then to remove no hockey sticks or pucks from the rules and allow them to stay in.
I'll second that.
Mr. Campbell, you have any comments on that? What does Dexter do? I mean, this, I guess my concern about that is that it is a pretty small rink and if you have like 10 people on there and just two people shooting back and forth, couldn't that be, make things a little bit dicey for somebody getting hurt?
Okay, what if you said?
How about without people?
No hockey with free skating.
Yeah, with other people there.
Well, free skating.
What does that mean?
Well, whatever. That's people skating, just skating, not playing any games, just skating. I mean, people play crack the whip. I don't know if anybody else did that when there were kids skating. That, that's more dangerous than little kids with a hockey... That's more dangerous than little kids with a hockey puck.
I mean, the big, I think our biggest problem is it's a pretty small facility, and that we're trying to accommodate a lot of public needs in this relatively small facility. And, you know, we say, okay, then it's going to be, is it going to be dominated by hockey sticks? Then little kids, you know, so I guess I agree with you, Pat, that it would be nice not to have to make all these rules, but at the same time, because it's not a big pond, it's a relatively small-
Well, that's the exact reason why I think it's safe to do that, because you're just not going to, you have to full-tail speed.
No, that's right.
And, you know.
There could be a couple, not necessarily dad and kid, but, you know, a couple of middle schoolers or, you know, older that are really wanting to get out on the ice.
I guess I just would hope that this world isn't as bad, so.
Mr. Campbell, do you have a comment?
Well, I would, I would say I would like to run that by what our liability carrier does say about allowing hockey sticks and pucks. And then the other question I would have would be, how would we, how do we envision designating that time? Do we, I mean, because if somebody goes out there, if there's no certain designated time, so after such as, between such and such hours, you can play hockey, which is okay, but otherwise, if you just say, because if somebody shows up to play hockey, and they could potentially dominate, and when I say dominate, that's a strong word, they could potentially be there for quite some time and playing hockey while others wanted to skate potentially. Again, I just throw those out for discussion.
Mr. Law.
The other part to this is, with these rules, is that who's going to enforce them? You know, is somebody going to call the police department and say, there's skaters out here with hockey pucks? I mean, we don't have the capacity to do that. I don't think anybody wants to see the police department walking around telling, you know, somebody to get off the ice. So, in a way, this is sort of futile and unenforceable with the resources we have.
Well, I think it's, you know, guidelines for safety sake. I would be amenable to the amendment that if no hockey sticks or pucks during free skate, but in light of the fact that I've been sort of watching the same, how many, there's a lot, there can be a lot of people on there, and I just, I can see it potentially really not making it as available to the broader people that are just skating. That's my concern, so. Mr. Rhodes.
Yeah, two comments. One is, as the mover of the original motion, I really am not in favor of this proposed amendment, because, as the mayor just said, I think that the individuals who would want to play hockey on that small space represent a relatively small percentage of our community, who would then be probably denied the opportunity to free skate on that space. And if we had a rule that said not during free skating, then if there's a hockey game in process and somebody shows up and wants to skate, the people playing hockey are not going to want to just quit playing hockey and walk off the rink. That probably will not happen, in my opinion. And then a second is a related but different comment, and that is that I've adjusted the light system for the Hennyfield lights, so that they should not come on before six o'clock in the morning, and they should go off at ten-thirty in the evening. I've not been by Hennyfield at those hours since I did that, to see if it's really working.
It's working.
It's working. Okay, good.
I can see the skaters from my house, too. To your comment about to try to make a happy medium, I would say no hockey games, sticks and pucks during free, no sticks and pucks during free skate, and that sort of, in other words, you can't have a five-on-five game, but somebody, a dad and kid, could, you know, mess around on the ice, but not a formal, you know, big game going on. But I think, again, that if it's just a couple people messing around on the ice, then it's supposed to be casual, not a formal. And this is also something I think we're going to have to work through as time goes on, because it's a brand-new thing, and we're trying to accommodate a lot of different needs. And I will tell you that my kids, we're all getting skates, right? First thing, my son said to my daughters, I'm going to teach you how to play hockey. And I said, no, you can't do that. And he's like, no way. And so it's not like he wants to go have a game, but he wants to teach her. So, I already have this problem in my house. He's like, well, you can't do that. So, that's where we've left it.
Well, to start it back, what Pat Little's saying is that it's not like the rink is jammed with people all the time, that there are times when there's nobody there, there are times when there's a couple people there. If you want to take a stick and a puck and you just go and around, or, you know, have more, there's more than enough ice for, to accommodate the free skaters and those with a stick and a puck. And you're not going to have a full-fledged game, you can't do that. And if that's specified in rules, then people, you know, should understand that. But as Councilmember Little says, if you just want to take a stick and a puck and just, you know, stick handle, go around the ice, whatever, I mean, I would hope that people who do that are responsible enough to watch out for others and vice versa. It's the same thing with the free skaters. Free skaters have to watch where they're going, and doesn't, so, anyway. I don't, I don't see an issue with, you know, as Councilmember Little says, just having a couple people coming on with a stick and a puck. Now, I don't want to see any fights that break out because, you know, someone wants to play hockey and, you know, and someone else comes along and they just want to free skate, but, anyway.
Mr. Campbell.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You asked a question, what is Dexter, these are modeled after Dexter's rules, is my understanding. And also, I guess my question is, if that's the way we go, with the, keep referencing free skate, what is the definition of free skate? Is there a specific time, hours for free skate?
It's always free skate.
It's always free skate.
So during, so you're saying that they can play hockey anytime?
That they, what I was proposing is no hockey sticks or pucks during free skate, meaning if there's a bunch of people on there, they, you can't, but if there's nobody on there and they get on there, then-
But when somebody shows up to free skate, just to skate?
Right, then they have to not hit back and forth, so.
Yeah, well, and I guess I share the concern that Councilmember Rhodes has, is that will they stop? Will they get off the ice? And Councilmember Little's absolutely right. I mean, we're not going to, we don't have the resources to run up there, you know, all the time and say, hey, you have a hockey puck and a stick to, and you get off, but the majority of the people are, I'm sure, will be reasonable.
Well, how does Councilwoman handle the rules? A lot of dialogue on this.
We have an amendment on the floor.
Okay, the amendment on the floor is-
To amend the-
To amend the motion to remove the no hockey sticks or pucks from the rules and regulations. Did everybody hear that amendment? We'll go on the amendment first. The amendment is to remove no hockey sticks or pucks. All in favor for that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So, that was, Linda, how did you?
Put yes.
To remove no hockey sticks and pucks? Pat?
Aye.
Okay, so that passed. Okay, so, could you run that past our insurance company, too, and make sure that you're aware of that? So, and also, it's on the sign, since that's already out?
Yeah, those are the temporary signs. We wanted to get it opened up. This is, we wanted to be able to give some fairly permanent signs that we would put up. That's, so, we just went with those yard-type signs, relatively inexpensive, so at least folks, especially since Christmas break started on Friday, they can get out and use the rink.
Okay, so the original motion we have on the floor is to acknowledge receipt and approve the regulations with this, I would be with this amendment. Any further discussion on the motion? I have a question. Who's going to be responsible for putting up the no skating sign? When the weather's bad, or?
City staff will be.
So there's going to be somebody monitoring that rink every day?
Yeah, between, sure, between DPW and ART, that's what we've been doing.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion?
Mayor.
Mr. Ivey.
Yes, I have one concern. Earlier, City Manager Campbell mentioned that we might revisit the rule that's in question with the liability insurance underwriter. And I think, maybe the city attorney has an opinion on this, but I think my opinion would be that that's a, that's a good idea, and we should do that.
Absolutely. I agree we should do it. There may be an exemption, a parks exemption, but we need to verify that with our carriers, so we know where we stand.
Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten fifty-three, the fiscal year eleven budget amendments. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December fifteenth, twenty-ten, and December sixteenth, twenty-ten memos regarding first amended fiscal year eleven budgets for fire special assessment, refuse SBA building, Mission Municipal Building, cemetery, major streets, local streets, municipal streets, sewer, water, recreation bond, recreation complex, and general fund, to approve and adopt or not adopt the first amended fiscal year eleven budgets.
Moved to approve and adopt.
Move, Rhodes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Law, to approve and adopt. Discussion. No questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten one eighty, ordinance number seven thirty-two, change in hours for Sunday sales of alcohol. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December ninth, twenty-ten memo from deputy police chief CO, and a December first, twenty-ten letter from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to acknowledge receipt and reading ordinance number seven thirty-two, and ordinance to amend section six dash six, hours of chapter six, alcoholic liquors of the Celine City Code to conform to state law. To approve and adopt or not adopt said ordinance number seven thirty-two as submitted.
Moved to approve and adopt.
Marle, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Tahar. Discussion. Mr. Law.
I had a question concerning whether or not this was something that is an option that the city has, or beyond that, as it says in the memo, that we could go beyond, in other words, further restrictions, or can we keep it, keep the ordinance the way it is? In other words, do we have to go by what the state law is, or can we just stay with our present ordinance?
I think we missed the window.
But can we keep the same ordinance as it is?
Mr. Grossman.
The statute is very clear that we may keep what we have. We may prohibit sales contrary to state-
The city of Ypsilanti did prohibit Sunday morning liquor sales.
So the current ordinance, then, if I can, Mayor, is that restriction is from Sunday, it's from noon until two AM. So, starting at noon. The state law is seven AM, starting. Is that right, on Sunday? So we, as Mr. Grossman says, we can keep our present ordinance the way it is. I would prefer to stay, keep it the way it is, as it is currently written. For personal opinion, comments?
Okay, further discussion on the motion? Mr. Marle.
I feel very strongly about this motion, Mayor. In fact, I've long harbored the belief that the state law prohibiting Sunday morning liquor sales or alcoholic beverage sales was probably one of the stupidest and dumbest pieces of legislation ever enacted. And if a business and establishment maintains the proper permits and law-abiding citizens want to buy alcoholic beverages at that hour of the day, I don't see why a municipality or government unit should infringe upon that right. So I strongly and emphatically urge the adoption of this motion.
Mr. Law.
I strongly and say that I don't like when a state decides to say, even though this is not the case, that the state decides to say, okay, it's all or nothing. So, I am pleased that at least the municipality has the freedom and the ability and flexibility to at least keep its ordinance, which I don't think has had any real problems that I know of. But I understand and respect Mr. Marle's opinion about how maybe, in some people's views, that it's outdated and ridiculous. I don't feel that way, but that's all I say.
Okay. Further discussion, Mr. Little.
Yeah, I don't think this is the worst, that they currentize the worst legislation that it ever did. That's a pretty big deal.
I didn't say worse.
Oh, okay.
Some of it.
So, okay. Anyway, I just wonder if we don't adopt the state law, will we be putting our merchants at a disadvantage, and they wouldn't be able to compete? And I do know that on race day, half of Canada comes through here, stops at one of the grocery stores and buys a lot of alcohol, and they sometimes stop on Sunday as they're going home. So, you know, those are big, big days, I think, for some of our merchants, so.
Mr. Ivey.
Well, I wanted to, to say that this is indeed an ancient piece of legislation. It's kind of leftover from the prohibition days, and I would agree with my honorable colleague that it is ridiculous. I also wanted to cite that the Michigan Restaurant Association was instrumental in helping get this legislation through the State House. And I am, I'm sure that they're looking out for all of those restaurant owners and those that are retailers as well, to make the best of additional sales. However, there is a price, as you know, that each outlet has to pay in order to have the opportunity to sell liquor at this additional timeframe. I believe it's a hundred and sixty dollars per year for minimal cost for a license to do so. But I am in support of the motion, because I think it's consistent, if we, in the revised scenario, we have a consistent schedule for the sale of liquor, and I think that's probably the best way to go. So I'll be supporting it.
Mr. Marle.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to address a comment that Mr. Little made. As a matter of fact, Councilmember Little, I had a conversation yesterday with a business owner, a merchant, who maintains the proper permits to sell not only beer, wine, but also spirits. And he said that if this proposal or resolution was adopted by the city of Celine, he'd be in contact with the Liquor Control Commission by the end of this week to get the proper permits to sell spirits during that period of time between seven and noon on Sunday. So he thought it was important to his business, his financial livelihood.
Okay, further discussion on this motion? Okay, the motion currently is to approve and adopt ordinance number seven thirty-two. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item ten one eighty-one, grant request for non-motorized path from Maple Road to Harris Street. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December fifteenth, twenty-ten memo from Finance Director Burgoyne, to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, authorizing application to Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation Commission for a fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollar connecting communities grant contingent on approval of the documents by the city attorney for the remaining portion of the estimated two-hundred forty-six thousand dollar cost for a non-motorized path project from Maple Road to Harris Street.
Moved to approve and adopt.
Second. Move, Ivey, second, Tahar. To approve and adopt. Mr. Law, Mr. Burgoyne, you want to talk about this?
Well, this non-motorized path project would be in conjunction with the library. The library would do their portion. We already have two grants for this. We have CARES grant for twenty thousand dollars, and we've spent another small amount, about seven thousand dollars, I believe, from another grant. And we have matching portions from TIFA funds and library funds, and there's a gap of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and ten. And that gap is what we're asking for from the county. This is part of the county's network. The county's network goes right through this, and it's very valid to ask them to participate. They have several hundred thousand dollars. They like to give grants to help complete a project. Well, their portion would be about twenty percent, so it seems very reasonable to reach out to them.
This has gone in front of the Parks Commission, right, the proposal for the path?
I can speak to that issue. Thank you, Mayor. In fact, the Parks Commission did discuss this, and the consensus is very much in favor of this as one of the projects within the parks, a non-motorized pathway from Maple to Harris Street, as well as a non-motorized pathway through Peoples Park from South Ann Arbor Street to Monroe Street. But this has the highest priority of projects right now with the commission.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion? There's no further discussion on the motion to apply for this community grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10182, let's start with acknowledging receipt of the December 15th, 2010 memo from city manager Campbell. City manager Campbell, the December 20th memo from Alan Lewis, the December 17th memo from Kevin Murphy, and December 16th memo from, or letter from Theo Helms, and two documents, city of Celine high deductible options, and Celine by unit costs, and filed.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Law, second moral. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we spoke, I think it was a work session or goal setting, oh, we did have a work session a couple of weeks ago, reference our recent renewal numbers for Blue Cross Blue Shield for both active employees as well as retirees for health benefits. And you may recall, the overall increase was 33%, just under $240,000. Excuse me. And even in good times, I dare say that's too large of an increase for the city to take on without trying to make some changes, especially since we've had three years of declining revenues and been looking at a fourth and who knows how many more, but certainly from our projections, will be a fourth in 2011 calendar year. So we went to, went to the bargaining units, and we essentially, well, let me back, I'm sorry, we met with our third-party administrator, Cap McInsurance, and got the numbers, talked about some possible alternatives, how do we do some things. You may recall, at the direction of city council earlier this year, during the budget process for the current fiscal year that we're in, we were directed to go out and look at alternative providers, which we did, and we received four proposals. Two, I believe only one or two of them actually would cover everybody, active and retirees. The other ones were not interested in covering retirees. And the way Blue Cross Blue Shield works is, if, for instance, if we said we'll leave our retirees with Blue Cross Blue Shield and go to a different provider for actives, they would no longer provide, they would, Blue Cross would not cover our retirees. So we did, there was one very competitive proposal, Priority Health, you may recall. Unfortunately, they do not provide coverage to University of Michigan health systems. So they've been, they're been ongoing, but they've not been able to sign a contract as of yet. So we, you also may recall that this is, we're in our third year of changing to the PPO with the health savings account with a high deductible. In our current, current plan design is a, again, HSA, health savings account, high deductible with a $2,000 deductible for single person, $2,000 deductible for two-person and family. And last year, the Teamsters, as well as the non-union, the Teamsters agreed to concessions to institute a $10.60 drug card for generic and name brand. And so that, so that changed a little bit last year, or actually the current year, because our benefit year is January 1st as a calendar year for health benefits. We also, the city, in each bargaining unit, it's a little bit different, but in general, the first year, the city funded 100% of the deductible, and then police and non-union, the second year was 90%, with employees picking up the 10%. The second, the current year in was 80%, with employees picking up 20%. And then if everything were to be, remain equal, the plan was to go to 70% in 2011. Teamsters are a little bit different, they're at 85%, I believe. Again, they were fully funded, and now they're at 85%. So majority of our active employees, all but one, so more than, so more than, all but one are on this, participate in the HSA program. We also provide a PPO, which is, requires premium sharing, and then also an HMO requires premium sharing. Not everybody can qualify for an HSA for various rules, various reasons, so we offer those other two options. As I said, currently, there's one person on the HMO, nobody on the PPO, and everybody else on the HSA. With a couple things, a couple reasons why the big increase. One, we used to be, up until this last year, we were what was called community rated, meaning that we were part of a group or region, and so our individual claims experience didn't necessarily count against us. We were thrown into a pool, and the members of that pool, that region, all received the same increase, same percentage increase on an annual basis. Well, now, and it used to be, if you had 100 or more employees, you were what's called experience rated, and if you're under 100 employees, then you were what's called community experience. Well, they changed the rules beginning January 1st, 2010, that if you're over 50 or more, well, we qualify now. So now we're what's called experience rated. So if we have a bad claims year, where we have a number of claims, or some large claims, that counts against us. So this is the first year for 2011 that actually shows claims experience, individual claims experience. So now we're experience rated, so that increased our annual renewal, as well as changes, some of the changes from the national healthcare also contributed to that. And with the, with the individual claims, our rating, our rating percentage last year, for instance, was between 8 and 9%. And now, this year, because of the, our individual claims, our experience, individual experience is between 12 and 13%. So all those things put together meant that we had a very large increase. And we did have, we did, we had a number of claims and a few, as I mentioned earlier, a few large claims, so that all counted against us. Now, if we have a relatively good year, well, then that can count in our favor, so now that we're experience rated. However, having said all that, as we discussed, the council, and council gave direction, and I gave the recommendation of what I was proposing, the total package to help offset, one, healthcare, but overall costs, but healthcare costs was, or is, a wage freeze for the next fiscal year across the board for all employees, and then a change to the healthcare and to the plan design, which is now, for detail sakes, called Simply Blue Plan. Still the HSA, high deductible, but it's increasing the amount of the deductible. It's also, it's going from instead of 2,000, 4,000, it's be 3,000 for a single and $6,000 for two-person or family. What is proposed is still, would be this 70%, but there's still, there's still more liability on the, financial liability on the individual employee as well. The other thing is, went from the, either with the police that had no drug card, because, and I should back up to, I'm sorry, the way an HSA works is, once you, once you satisfy the deductible, or before you satisfy the deductible, insurance doesn't cover anything. And so every, any costs you incur, you have to pay and use your HSA monies to pay for that. And then, once, once that deductible's been satisfied, then the insurance covers, the coinsurance, as it's called, covers 100%. And that's the way that, we started out, and that's the way the police currently still have it. But as I mentioned earlier, the Teamsters and non-union made a change last year to help reduce some costs of the increase to a 10.60 drug card. So once the deductible was, was met, then, the 2,000, 4,000, then we had the 10.60 card, which, without trying to get too complicated, that would kick in up to what's called an out-of-pocket maximum of $1,000 additional for drug, for prescriptions only, for a single person, and 2,000 for a two-person or family. And then, once you satisfy those, then, then the prescriptions were free as well, but in, in medical services, after the original deductible is met, are also covered 100%. Well, now what we're proposing is, again, increasing the deductible, and then changing the prescription from a 10.60, which is a two-tiered system, to a three-tiered system, which is 10.40, 80 drug card, again, with the out-of-pocket maximum of $1,000 for a single and $2,000 out-of-pocket maximum for two-person or family. The $10 is for generic, the $40 is for name brand, and the $80 is what's called non-preferred name brand. Some of the experimental drugs and those types of things would be $80. So once, the way it works again, once you hit the, you hit your 3,000 or 6,000 dollar deductible, everything but prescription drugs are covered 100%. And then, prescription drugs are kicked into the 10.40, 80 drug card, and until another 10, and once that 1,000 or 2,000 out-of-pocket maximum is met, then even your prescription drugs would be met. And if, if and when that happens, that means that somebody's probably having a pretty expensive year medically speaking. So having said all that, we proposed that, we sent, there was a request to all three bargaining units, the Teamsters, Local 214, the Celine Police Officer Association, as well as the Celine Sergeants Association. And you have before you their responses, and we had asked for, again, we asked for wage concession for beginning July 1st, 2011, as well as the change to the Simply Blue that I just described. The, first of all, I want to thank all bargaining units for considering, even coming to the table, because we are, they do have current agreements in place. Some did not have to come to the table, they did, they willingly, I appreciate that. And we had, I think we had some good dialogue. There was one, she must have stepped up, there was one of our employees, it's one of the Teamster stewards that was here. But in any case, they did, for the most part, some stepped up more than others, but it's, I guess we'll start, keep the, keep the best for the last, I guess. But, and I apologize, but I didn't get these, I got the police and the sergeants late Friday, and then I received the Teamsters this afternoon late, so that's why, in my memo, that they weren't included. But essentially, the Celine Police Officer Association and the sergeants have said they will, basically, they've either stood silent or rejected the wage freeze. However, when the healthcare, they have agreed to make the switch to the Simply Blue that I just outlined, the high deductible 3,000, 6,000. However, they want to be made whole, meaning that they don't want, they'll switch the plan design, but they don't want to pay any more money than they're paying right now. Certainly not, to me, that's a starting point. However, I know they're not going anywhere. Their, their contract is up, expires June 30th of 2012, and they are not, neither party are interested in discussing this any further than this offer that they have. Well, I had hoped for more. Quite honestly, this is a huge step, so I appreciate that. Save the best for last. Extremely pleased and very thankful, again, for everybody, but the Teamsters, again, they stepped up last year when we asked them to, and they stepped up again this year pretty significantly. They did agree to a wage freeze, cola only, so that means that the way our, our, both union and non-union, we have, it's called a step system. And so we have, for instance, non-union have a nine-step wage system, and then, once, once you get to that ninth step, after you've been there a year, then you would just, you wouldn't have any more steps to go up. But typically, in the past, people would get a step and a cola. And these, if you're at that, that ninth step, you don't have another step to go, then people are eligible for a, termed a merit raise in place of that step. The, the, both bargaining, all three bargaining units have a four-step system as opposed to nine, and they, instead of calling it a merit, they call it longevity. And that's what you have, I, in front of you, well, we, again, what we've talked about and proposed is it says staff. Staff and non-union non-staff, that's basically non-union folks, myself included. The proposal in the, in the upcoming fiscal year 12 budget will be a complete freeze across the board for non-union folks, so that means no cola, no step, no longevity or merit. The Teamsters have said they would do a wage freeze, cola only, but they, but they would still maintain the step increase and longevity. There's only a couple of folks in steps in the Teamsters. Most everybody is at the maximum, so they qualify for longevity. And then, again, they said the police, which includes the sergeants, have declined that. So, and, oh, the other, which is important, the current Teamster contract expires June 30th of 2011. They've asked that it be extended, a year, but again, that year would be with the zero, with the wage freeze, the cola freeze. And so my, my recommendation is that city council would consider this and approve as, certainly, as I said earlier, I would really, I would like to do better on police, but I know that they're not, they're not interested in moving any further than what they've already, which is significant. I mean, they, they did change plans, so we will be at the bargaining table with them in a year and a half. So I'm happy to try and answer any questions, comments if I can.
Mr. Law.
So clarification, Mr. Cafal, about what you wish the council to approve tonight, possibly, is what Police Officers Association, Sergeants Association have suggested, and change in their plans, and the Teamsters with their concessions on the cola and the extension of the contract?
That's correct. As well as, for non-union, changing the HSA. The other two, as I mentioned earlier, we have a PPO, and, PPO and HMO, that those, those would remain the same as far as the percent premium share.
And Teamsters change their?
Yeah, and you, did you mention Teamsters would change their plan per the 80, instead of, except to, thank you very much, Lee, left that out, which is important part, point. The Teamsters said they would go to the Simply Blue, but instead of 70%, the city paying 70% of the deductible, they would want, they would remain at the same. Currently, they're at 80, per contract would be 85%. And so the bottom, the savings, per that work session, you all may recall, what we had proposed across the board at the 70%, the Simply Blue, was like a 5.6% instead of a 33%. of a 30, 33 percent overall. And 29, when it comes to this, 29 percent increase, it would, it was going to be a 5.6 percent increase, but with these variations based upon what the bargaining units have proposed, would be an 8.96 percent increase overall.
Where did the 3 percent COLA come from?
3 percent? The 3 percent was budgeted, it was, I mean, I'm sorry, negotiated.
Who established that as, as COLA?
The union negotiated that, or agreed. We negotiated the last negotiation session, after, when the last agreement had expired.
That's based on Detroit CPI, or?
No, that was based on 3 percent. We essentially, we talked about what we had, what, what the city was able to provide at that time, which was at that time 3 percent. And if you recall, we ratified these just before the wheels fell off the bus, as they say, before the economic meltdown. But that, at that time, we said, you have 3 percent, use it however you want. If you want to use it solely for wages, or if you want to use it for a combination of other benefits, but you have 3 percent to, to work with, and how do you want to see it done? So, you also may recall that they also made a, a big switch to the healthcare that was significant, fairly significant cost savings at the time. So that's how that was established.
Further questions, Mr. Moore?
Actually, not question, mayor, comment for council, Mr. Campbell, if you're amenable to that. I'll take that as yes, okay. Thank you. I promise not to be as fiery on this issue as I was on the Sunday morning liquor sales. But, Mr. Campbell, I, I wanted to commend you and applaud your efforts on, on this issue, and to let the citizens know that although this is not a perfect solution to our, our healthcare problems, I think it is a good solution. And I think you did your best to control the, the rate in which we're spending to provide healthcare coverage for our employees. And although we are switching plans, I feel, I still think we're doing an outstanding job at providing our employees with above-average, above-par healthcare benefits. So, I don't know if the mayor and clerk have, have the language yet for this motion, but I would be, I'd be happy to move it.
Okay, so.
We have a motion on the floor.
We didn't vote on the previous one?
Oh, no, we.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt of the memo from C, Mayor Campbell, and the five, three letters of understanding from the unions, and then the two cost schedules. So, is there further discussion on the acknowledgement of receipt of those documents? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, what I'd like to do is break this up into three motions. The first, we, they'll be tied together, but just for clarity purposes, because this is a little complex. The first motion, which I would call, one, is the motion to change the current health insurance benefits for active employees from Blue Cross Blue Shield, a Michigan Flexible Blue 3, which is a high deductible HSA, to a new Blue Cross Blue Shield, a Michigan Health Plan Design, called the Simply Blue HSA 3,000, which is the one that we've been talking about since we had the work session. Two would be to follow the HSA deductible guidelines per the union memo. I'm calling memos of understanding, but basically, the three documents that we have presented in front of us, because each one has a variation to how we're handling the deductible, so I can't really put that in a motion, but, so we refer to those three letters. And then, three, to extend the Teamster contract, contract to 2012 with COLA wage freeze through June 30, 12. I believe, does that cover everything, Mr. Campbell?
Believe so, for.
Because the other concessions are not really in this part of it. I mean, the stuff is not, that's not really something we are doing now that would be part of a budget.
Right, right. The other thing for non-union staff would be to change the, the, the health benefits. Because the other, the, as far as the, the, I mean, you, you could, I mean, but, I mean, that's going to be part of the budgeting process, that will be.
Yeah, so I just wrote it per, that, what you had in your memo, the current health insurance benefits changed from flexible through Blue 3 to Simply Blue HSA 3,000.
Right, very good.
Does that, does everybody sound?
You don't have the wage freeze for the non-union non-staff?
No, because that wouldn't be, that's going to be something that's.
Wouldn't be germanic.
We're not voting, okay. It's not, we're really voting on benefits tonight, and it's not a union. Okay, so, that would be the motion?
Yep, be happy to move that, mayor.
Do we have a second for this motion? Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for your work, Mr. Campbell, and also for the union work on this. It's, it's not as good as I had hoped, but it's better than it was.
Right, I agree, and I do, again, I guess that I do, do want to say thank you to the bargaining units for, if nothing else, coming to the table. Certainly wanted more, and, and will keep working, because as Councilman Ramaral alluded, I mean, it's a start to our problem, but it's, it's a greater issue as we go down the road, as they say. But, but I want to, I say thank you to all employees, because it's, we're sharing this across the board, and it's, it's certainly not easy, but, but I'm thankful for, for everybody willing to come up and, and, and help out.
Okay, so, the next item on the agenda under discussion, we have commission committee reports from council members. Is there any? Mr. Rhodes?
I'd like to report on the youth council, which met last on December the 14th. Several items, the first one is to acknowledge that they had volunteers to carry the banner, which began the holiday parade. Even though it was kind of chilly for them and the rest of us in there. They also volunteered at the Chamber of Commerce with, I believe, filling the stockings for that drawing. They donated, collected and donated from themselves $60 to the Celine Social Services for the Adopt a Family program. They're currently planning for the middle school lock-in, which will be held at the rec center on February the 14th. And they are discussing ways to continue to support the Fifth Corner Teen Center. And then, last but not least, they were recognized in the November, December issue of the review of the Michigan Municipal League Program as one of 10 youth councils in the state. So I provided them with copies of that at their last meeting. And thank you to whoever sent that information in. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Ivey?
Thank you, mayor. I have two reports, and they're either lengthy, so I beg your indulgence here for a few minutes. First would be the cable commission meeting that occurred on the 14th of December, last Tuesday. For the benefit of those who may not know, the Public Service Television Station, commonly referred to as Channel 18, is, is owned by the city of Celine, but actually operated by the Celine Area Schools. Commissioner and station manager Stephen Stump reported that he was finishing the video production of the holiday parade, and that he had hoped to have it in the program lineup by this past weekend. I talked to him today, in fact, and he confirmed that the parade was aired on Channel 18 Saturday and Sunday, and it should be repeated, of course, frequently in the next week or so. And I believe he gave you the DVD discs, did he not, Mr. Campbell? Excellent. To their credit, Mr. Stump and his student assistants have managed to record, produce, and air all of the following events since our last cable commission meeting back in September. The 75th Annual Celine Community Fair Parade, the 2010 Miss Celine Pageant, the Celine School Board Forum, the Celine Homecoming Parade, several high school varsity football games, as well as volleyball, soccer, field hockey, water polo matches, the list goes on and on. The annual Celine Fiddler's Fall Hometown Concert, the Celine High School Masterworks Choir Concert, and, most recently, of course, the holiday parade. Surely, my colleagues on council recognize and will commend Mr. Stump and his assistants for, for this string of accomplishments. At last Tuesday's meeting, we also discussed the council member interviews project. You may recall that in 2009, the city planned to get video interviews of, of the mayor and all council members recorded, produced, and aired by Channel 18. After long scheduling delays due to the prioritization of Celine Area Schools' staff resources, the interviews were finally conducted this spring. The mayor and five of six council members were interviewed and recorded in the studio, but only two of the interviews were actually aired and not televised on Channel 18 until late in the summer. Due to constraints on studio staff resources, the production and completion of this project was relegated a lower priority, with the bulk of Channel 18 staff being devoted to the coverage of the school activities and the community events. But getting back to the status of the council member interviews, the interviews that did not get produced, the commission felt were no longer relevant. And I propose to the commission that our two new council members, Ms. Terhar and Mr. Gerbach, be invited to be interviewed in 2011, and that those officials who inter, whose interviews were not aired have the opportunity, if they so desire, to re-record their interviews. Commissioner and city manager Campbell supported this plan and recommended a schedule with deadlines and accountability, so that it gets done according to a schedule. Mr. Stump accepted the proposal, and he was asked to send invitations to council members by January. I remind my colleagues that your participation is voluntary, but I think you'll agree that in the interest of trust and transparency, it's a good idea that citizens have an opportunity to use the media to become aware of us, get better acquainted with us, the people who represent them. And this project is always intended to be a step in that direction. Speaking to council as your liaison to this commission, and speaking as a custodian of the city's ownership of the station, I am disappointed by the lack of progress that we've made in making Channel 18 a communication preference, that our citizens say they can turn to and depend on for timely information about city government. A recent city survey, I think, bears that out. I am pleased this year that the station's management has been effective covering a lot of community events. And as a citizen, I, I recognize this, I take pride in it, and also, we must bear in mind that the audience for Channel 18 is not limited just to those people who reside within the city limits. Council should know that this issue of limited staff resources at the studio in the high school has been repeatedly discussed at our quarterly cable commission meetings. Earlier this year, the city manager will recall that he spoke to school officials regarding studio staff resources. But it is evident to me that as a result of that appeal and the concerns expressed by commissioners at the meetings, that operations at the station have not significantly improved. Other difficulties that we've had recently, for instance, the unexplained technical glitches, which have disrupted programming, and particularly, the delays in the airing of council meetings have been an ongoing concern. Beyond all this, and looking ahead, I, I contend that the current arrangement that we have can only result in the city under utilizing Channel 18 as a communication tool. And I, I end this report on, on our meeting and on our activity for the year, that, I, I feel if city officials believe that Channel 18 is a relevant medium, and that we want the city to continue to own and support it, then, then changes to the balance of the partnership with the schools may well be a remedy for the council's consideration. The Celine Parks Commission met on Tuesday, December 14th, and among the discussion items were anticipated revisions to the Mill Pond Park CMI grant project, the finalizing of priorities for FY 2012 park projects, and the finalizing of the Parks Commission budget for FY 2012. DPW Director Jeff Fordice came before the Parks Commission and advised on the changes that are necessary to the pending Mill Pond Park improvement project as a result of the shortfall in grant funding. Preliminary engineering cost estimates greatly exceeded the grant budget, so we had to eliminate from the original plan a rain garden with native plantings near the parking lot access ramp, and we also eliminated an observation pier along the water's edge. That having been said, the grant is still about $45,000 short of the original cost estimate for the project, and we may have to modify the plan even further, and, and some of the projects within the plan may well be expendable. Mr. Fordice advised that, once a bid is accepted, we'll look at the other elements and present options to the, to the Parks Commission about what might have to be expendable. The commission did say that there are two elements of the plan that are not expendable. They, they feel very strongly that we, we need to provide the mesh ramps that, that are leading into the water for the dog park area, and also stabilize the Bowley Bridge, which is in need of some repair. So the project's going to get rebid this coming spring, and Mr. Fordice said he's confident that construction could start by early summer. The commission discussed priorities for park projects for FY 2012, and agreed the Teft Park rec center parking lot resurfacing overlay was high on the list. Also, signage at the city parks was an important priority. At least 16 new signs at a cost of roughly $8,000 were proposed to identify parks or designate park rules. The two major capital improvement projects in the parks that the commission endorsed were a paved parking lot at People's Park, and a picnic shelter at Brecken Park. The commission also, as I said earlier, expressed its support for the non-motorized path promoted from Maple Road to Harris Street. The commission approved the FY 2012 park commission budget, which mirrored the budget from the previous fiscal year. And the commission decided on, on five goals for FY 2012. Expand the Parks Commission portion of the city website, offer a community-type activity in three different parks, increase participation in the annual spring park cleanup event, develop a program to provide wood chips to the community, and increase presence in social networking sites. That's all I have regarding the meeting, but let me take this opportunity to encourage those citizens who are interested in our city parks to think about serving our community as a volunteer, and, and that can be accomplished checking the city website and applying to volunteer, to be on the commission in 2011. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Terhar?
Yes. The Arts and Culture Committee met, met on Monday, December 13th. At that point, we had not yet received word about the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs grant application. But subsequently, the news has come, and we've been informed that the grant funding we've received is 50 percent of the amount requested, which provides $1,900 toward the fabrication budget. This is the final component of the total funding for the budget. And now that the final amount is, of, of funding is determined, the artists will be asked to prepare a completed design proposal, or completed design proposals, to present to the committee, hopefully at the January meeting. The committee then will continue to work with the artists to ensure quality product within the funding available. The funding total available is about $1,000 less than the, the amount that had been discussed earlier. And the second item from this meeting is that Lynn Fryman, who has served as co-chair of the committee since its inception, announced to the committee that she has accepted the position of board chair for the Arts Alliance of Washtenaw County. This is the organization which helped Celine develop a five-year cultural plan recently. As a result of taking this new position, Lynn has notified Mayor Driscoll that she will not be able to continue to serve as co-chair of this committee after the end of this year. So we anticipate some organizational changes within the committee in 2011. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other commissioner committee reports? Reports or other announcements? Winter festival, January 29th, make sure it's on everybody's calendar, we're going to have nice cold and snow, right? Glenn, you're responsible for that?
Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to mention, I think everybody saw in the paper that there was a building, a home that was demolished on Michigan Avenue. a building, a home that was demolished on Michigan Avenue, I don't know, about 10 days ago, maybe, maybe longer. And I just, Alan and city manager Campbell are reviewing the process for demolition, and they're going to be getting back to council on how that process works more clearly. So just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. I don't know if you all were aware of that, the building next to the St. Paul's was demolished. It used to be Salt City Antiques. And then, so I don't know, we should be hearing something back, I guess, within 30 days.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm confused. I don't quite understand the issue.
Well, I think there would need to be some clarity around the process and what the expectations are. I don't believe that the parking lot that was mentioned was under the impression that there was going to be a parking lot there, so there just needs to be some clarity around the process that what was the outcome if you're going to demolish a building. And we're looking into what other communities do as far as the process. And then, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I'd just gotten back from the National League of Cities Conference, and I just wanted to report out some of the information that I got. I talked to, well, it was a long session, a long week, but I talked to several vendors that are going to be hopefully getting some information either back to me or to the city. We followed up with utility service partners for that service line warranty program that Mr. Rhodes had mentioned. It was in the newspaper, actually, and we're working on seeing if that's a viable program for citizens. And then, there's also, there's the Gifts in Kind. Todd, you asked for me to get information on that. That's a nonprofit that delivers excess inventory to low-income families, and basically, it's so, like, I actually worked there, it's sort of like their nonprofit, every community, every conference has, like, one year we did a build, you know, spent a couple hours doing a Habitat for Humanity build when we were in New Orleans, but they take, like, they had these big boxes, and I actually was making the boxes and following them up, so they put like blankets and stuff that, like, stores have excess inventory of, and they basically, it's a way of stores writing off their inventory and making a donation, so there's actually more value there. And then, there was also a company there called E-Civis that has a grant database, E-Civic, I think it's what it's called. So I'm trying to get access for that, to access state and federal grants. It's a database that shows, you know, you put in keywords. And then, another company called Minisivid, which does equipment auction, and they don't go through eBay, it's their own online service and the equipment. We don't have to pay to put on, like we do on eBay. The commission actually gets paid by the buyer, so it could potentially save the city some money. I talked to Waste Management about trying to get, I'm still trying to get those solar recycle bins, I bug them every year, one of these days we'll get them. And then, there was another company called I-3 America, which is Fiber to the Home, which is, you know, I know, you guys probably know, we did the Google partnership with Pitsill to try to get in the fiber program that they're going to be awarding in the new year. This is a program that actually goes through the sewer pipes, so interesting, so it's a lot, there's a lot of cost savings there, and so they're trying to, going to get some information forward to all these business cards onto Todd. And then, at the general sessions, there, we had Chuck Hagel speak about, you know, what to look forward to in working with our new federal legislators. Obviously, there's a lot of change in November. We had a Small Cities Council Roundtable about accessing federal funding. There's a lot of concern about the Community Development Block grants going away. Went to a session on what you're seeing in Snowmap Broadband. I already talked to Todd a little bit about this renovation financing, which is a tool to, for first-time home buyers, or for foreclosure and short sales, where you can actually add the cost of renovating the home, if you're buying the home and it's been deteriorated or torn apart, you can actually put the money for the actual investment in the home in your original mortgage, and they just hold it in escrow, and there's a program that's been out there for quite a period of time, and it would be a really good program to have in distressed neighborhoods or areas that we have some problems in. So I've talked to a couple of realtors about trying to make more awareness about that program. I went to a program on financing solar energy products, projects, Glenn, I'm looking at you, but trying to find some grant money for that, because we, you know, we applied for that grant on a roof, and we didn't get it, so we're trying to find, and I know, Todd, you went to a Green Communities thing last week, right, about that, too? And then, went on Building Healthier Cities and Towns, because we're looking at doing some more programs around pups. The International Council, you know, with our German and Japanese business development that we're trying to do, we have a really strong relationship, and I know Todd had talked to them before about trying to make a stronger relationship and access more economic development, which we talked about in our goal-setting last week, and I think there's some really good opportunities there. We have a good relationship with Jim, who's the head of that, and he's, we spend a lot of time talking about some things that we could be doing. There was a general session on sustainability. Another thing, the City Futures Panel on Community Regional Development was, I think I mentioned this to you, but I don't know if I brought it up at, there's an Economic Development Tool Kit that's basically a self-assessment tool that identifies areas where we might have some weakness around economic development and recruitment of business, and the NLC, you know, the Prescription Drug Program, and the survey, and some of the other, the online videos, some of the things that we've taken advantage of at a discounted rate. This is potentially going to be their next enterprise program project, so I've tried to get in front on that, so that if they do make an enterprise project, we could be that, one of the test people. Todd's like, great, thanks. And then, there was a really interesting session, Alderman from Chicago was, did one on participatory budgeting, and I'm not really sure how we can apply it yet, but basically, they're allocated a capital amount every year to do capital improvements, and he changed the way he was doing budgeting around these capital projects and had a very high-level community involvement, and it's a totally new model, and I think there's some great opportunities there. Haven't quite figured out how to translate it, but it's in the works. And then, Practical Strategies to Attract and Retain Economic Investment, which ties back to that whole economic development tool. The guy's actually from Northeastern University, but he spent quite a few years at U of M, and he also, he and this other guy that is on the west side of the state that does the Economic Gardening Program, they were speakers, and they had some really interesting information. And then, the last session on Saturday morning was, we had Jeb Bush, I think I mentioned this last meeting, that Jeb Bush and Robert Putnam spoke, and they actually, it was really interesting, because they came from very diverse political backgrounds, but, because Putnam wrote that book Bowling Alone, I don't know if any of you guys have read that, and then, you know, Governor Bush, you know, so they said right up front, they have from very different political parties, but they were talking on the immigration issue and how important it is for economic development for this country to get our arms around developing a comprehensive immigration reform policy, and to really get the federal government to be addressing that, instead of having pockets of states addressing it, and sometimes not necessarily legally. So it was a really interesting conference, and just wanted to let everybody know what we did, so that's it. And I don't know if we have any other discussion items? Does anybody else have anything else? Mr. Rhodes?
One item, I had forwarded some information to council members on December the 15th about the Drug 101 program, which is available to the city free of charge, being given under another grant program, and the local group called PAT, P-A-C-T, Parents and Community Together, it used to be called SCRED, is interested in putting that on in probably March, and I would like for council to consider assisting with putting that program on. I don't envision it requiring any actual funding, but assistance with marketing it and perhaps even providing this space for that to occur. So I was looking for some input from the rest of council as to whether or not we would consider that.
Is it, this is, it used to be SCRED, the SCRED group, is now the PAT group?
Yeah. This Drug 101.
They normally do that through the schools, don't they?
They have tried through the schools and various communities. They've also done it through the local hospitals in various communities. The last one that was tried here some months ago was not attended, and they thought, because it didn't have adequate sponsorship involvement from various organizations. So I would propose that if we are in agreement to support this activity, that I would work with, and they also would work with the Chamber of Commerce, the schools, and our hospital.
Sounds great. Mr. Little?
I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I hope that the council has a great next year, and council member elect Gerbach, and I just keep up the good, hard work, and I'll try not to come in and make rude comments about you all the time, and I move to adjourn.
Okay, can I hold that thought until we have our closing public comment?
Sure.
I actually had already written you-
I just wanted to be, I just wanted to move the adjournment.
You know what, Mr. Little? I had already written you down. Move, Little. So anyhow, I get it once in a while. And by the way, I hope that you do keep contacting us, because you were really, I think, a great contributor at our goal-setting session last week, and again, I really think your long-term perspective will be missed on our council, so thank you again for your continued participation, even as a non-elected person, which is almost, I would say, actually more valuable, because it's a totally different perspective. If we don't, do we have any further discussion items?
No.
Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizens may come forward at this time, may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Lauronis, 373 West Bennett. I just wanted to express my appreciation to council for payment of Celine's 2011 River Rays and Watershed Council dues. Each year, Celine is among the first local units of government in paying their dues. This year, it comes at an especially crucial point where the council is very short of funds. Also, payment of dues allows me to continue to serve as your representative to the council, as well as serve on the executive board. Among our current projects are updating our website, exploring other fundraising opportunities, and working with River Network, a national organization whose goal is to revive and strengthen local councils. In addition, we continue our Adopt a Stream program, and most importantly, we continue to publicize the importance of water quality to the residents of the watershed. So thank you very much.
Are we on camera? Tim Cummings on Clark Street, and that little cubby hole as well. Pat, I just wanted to say thanks so much. It's been a pleasure working with you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, or public comment, sorry? If not, our next meeting is January 3rd, is that right? Oh, we have council pictures after the meeting tonight, so don't go, council members, and we have no absences, so we have a motion by Mr. Little to adjourn at 9:43. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
That was me.
Second, Mr. Morrow.
Ma'am, excuse me. You probably didn't help me.
On favor to adjourn the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose motion to adjourn. Pose motion here.[1058.82]